And I told Rodney about the meeting and he said he was coming, but I don't know if he's.
Oh, well we may want to switch the order of the... Let's see.
I know it's the big... Eddie not sure we have Eddie going to come?
I don't know.
I didn't get a response.
He didn't call me.
That'll be a thrill.
A lot of questions.
Thanks, Eddie.
Take this opportunity to call the meeting to order. Mr. Dack, would this is approval of tonight's agenda? Perhaps we'd like to change the order of the two items.
Sure, I'll move back for any emotions.
On the off chance that Mr. Dack will be here. Shall we do that?
Yes.
Unless this is him, in this case we're going to keep Eric Song.
We may not too. Sir, we have a motion to approve the...
There he is.
There's the petition.
Sir, I'm just...
Still moved?
Yeah, on second. All in favor? The agenda is approved.
With the switch.
With the switch.
You almost got pulled out, see?
Yeah.
That's good.
Um, Secretary, this adoption of the minutes of the 619 meeting. This meeting was at 5:00 o'clock.
Yes? Still moved?
Second. David McCullough.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed, Harry. So, uh, public comments, limited to the public in the chairs. So assuming that Rodney is coming, we'll... Perhaps he will want to say something about his proposal. So let's deal with, um, the 730 Buchanan Road rezoning application first. Maybe, uh...
Oh, sounds...
Maybe Danny can walk us through this?
Sorry, yeah.
So what is it more than housekeeping, is it?
So it is asking for new uses.
But on the same little bit of land.
But on the same little bit of land. So it's a 730...
And a little bit of land is a little...
Commercial zone or...
There's a little bit of land that's industrial and then there's a bigger piece that's...
Yeah, that's all, yeah. So yeah, so 730 Buchanan Road is, um... So at the end of Buchanan Road is the 730 Buchanan Road. So it's a large, I think it's a 20-acre parcel, but a portion of it is zone industrial. It's industrial, commercial, A, is this little subsection of it. And that's the subject of the, the application is changes to this zone variation that they have on the property. So the industrial, commercial, A zoning allows principal uses like storage and warehouse, sale of building, construction, home improvement, supplies, welding, milling, shaping, and finishing of wood, and the manufacture of wood products are all permitted principal uses. And so what the application is applied for is to amend the zone to permit two additional uses. So transfer station and impound facility. So in terms of transfer stations, just some background. So what, what the applicant would like to do is feel to have a green waste facility licensed by Metro Vancouver. So that's something that Metro Vancouver, um, regulates and requires a license. So if you, you know, like cut down trees on your property, your options are under Metro Vancouver bylaws. You could dispose of it on your site, so you can grind it on your site, you can burn it, you know, whether permitting or whatever. You could bury it on your lot, or you could ship it directly to a Metro Vancouver facility. What you can't do is you can't ship it to somewhere else like on Bowen and store it.
Dispose of it.
And you can't combine it in a load with another, you know, site on Bowen. So you can't ship two, you can't combine two loads to take them to a facility themselves.
How, how is Bowen Waste able to do that? They have a...
So, Bowen Waste is like the, um, like our compost depot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they, I mean, I guess they're permitted, like I say, a license to do it to take it then to a, um, to Metro Vancouver, to a transfer station.
Because they're combining, obviously.
Yeah, they're combining. So it must be part of the... Yeah, and so the applicant has an application in with Metro Vancouver to be granted a license, but I think it's appropriate to link. Do we want to switch?
Okay, we'll switch back.
Is that okay with the donor, or just chair for one?
Sure.
Say or do you rather...
You have to say it exactly the same way next time, though.
Yeah.
No, we can reverse things back, I suppose.
To which we'll remember up to transfer station.
Up to, yes, you can't rewind, is that...
Yeah, they'll rewind it.
You need to rewind, yeah, you've got the real control.
So let's rewind all the way back to public comments. Mr. Dack, you, did you want to speak to your proposal?
Yes. For those of you who don't know, man, his daughter's voice.
Hi, everyone, welcome.
I have some, I have some plans as well that Rodney's going to... I'll just pass them out as well.
If you had in front of you, excuse my prompt, I just learned about me.
I'm sorry.
Here's just some views of the Marina. People want to know how it's going to affect the view. Officially, I guess, we have to keep the view open from the library. And that's on the first page. And the library, uh...
This picture's...
View is sort of... I don't know where they got that. The second page doesn't show much. Second page, I've lighted in some of the veils.
Or the little white triangles.
The little white triangles is what you'll probably see at a high tide from the center tap.
Sorry, that wasn't a high tide?
That's a high tide, very high tide. I think it was a 14-foot one, like those pictures here. Just to give you an idea. And this is going, we're proposing that we remove the floats that we have there. They're about eight, 10 foot wide, that we use just for dinghy storage and basically been a freebie and sort of a junker area. And, uh, so the area is already covered by floats, basically. Now that on these drawings that you see here, those are all 40-foot long floats. Oh, uh, you see? And they're 16-foot wide. We're going to try to narrow them down even further and go to a 14-foot wide float. Because we're having some trouble with the one drawing. You'll see it here. It's the one that shows the riprap.
Yeah, second to the area.
Second page.
Second page, it's here. So we just want to make sure that we're well clear of that riprap. So we're going to try to narrow the whole float down. And, uh, we have, we think we can do this, and again, I wasn't quite prepared for this because the drawings and most of them are all at, the interior designers was double checking some of my figures. And when you get into anything as small as this, you know, 200, 250 square foot, furniture becomes the key thing to get it inside. This isn't like a, sort of a normal house, this is a tiny house. And, uh, here is the reduced one, and I'm sorry, I only have a copy for one, you can pass it around. It's basically the same as those. If you'll notice even on the plans that we have here, we show two different layouts of furniture. We don't know which one we're going to use. That's why we're in that experimental stage. And this one, the two are pretty much the same with the exception, we moved the television so it isn't near the windows and things. Minor things like this, but very important system, you can just pass that around. That's the, that's where we were in the 14-foot. This one, I think I have another 14-foot.
So these are really designed for single-person staff? And most of our staff that are looking for this kind of accommodation are single people. We have, we have four currently who don't, are homeless basically on Bowen and are looking for spots. And all four of them have to be single. But through the year, three years that I've been renting docks and union steamship, that's what we find that are the people who are homeless or don't have a home or looking for something are single people. And, and some of them are transient in that they come in the summers, but the major, you know, quite a few of these four have been working for us for over a year and a half, two years now.
It's interesting to note, too, these people we're bringing in from Thunder Bay. Flying them and trying to find a place where they're right now, we've got a couple living on boats. We had to buy another boat just to provide some space for them. This is extremely critical for staffing. We had to close down Thursday's...
The whole month of July.
Because we couldn't run them 10 hours a day, seven days a week. Staffing is just...
It's useful.
Now then, we think that a lot of these people are just summer people. You know, they want to be here in the summer and that's when our season is, there's no denying that. We think that we can turn around and rent these out particularly for contractors and people like that that are coming driving all back and forth and they want, they're all the time heading us for, you know, cheaper space to stay whenever we have our cottages.
Which lessens the load on the ferry of these people coming back and forth every day.
Yeah.
You know, in their big, huge trucks.
And if we can cut it down, like more than here. The, uh, some of the contractors work under a union situation where they can't have two people in a room. They have to either have a separate room or a completely separate unit. All the hydro, all of the, I think the, I can't remember which other...
The unionized ones. These are hydro, tell us.
And so that's what we're trying to do with this. And in no way is this a, you know, a final drawing on us. It's, as I said, it's in with the interior designer now double checking something, making sure everything works. And then in addition to this, or you've seen the pictures where we plan to put them, we plan to sort of stack them, stack them in along the edge.
Your last page of the...
Here's a, give you an idea. And we haven't decided what the spacing and how these will work. We want to keep them spaced out so we can keep boats parking alongside.
Dinghies.
Dinghies and small, small fishing boats.
And to keep privacy to them, a little bit of privacy now. Agenda.
Now then, we've...
You're talking about pockets between the ends of the unit?
Yes, yeah. And, you know, that isn't set now. We don't know how that's going to be until we arrange to get boats in there. But obviously you'd want a couple boats in there and those boats are probably six or eight foot wide, those small ones. So that would be a gap of 12 foot. The other things that we, we have to be conscious of is the piling locations. So that, you know, put a pile like in the middle of the entrance, what it is. There's flexibility in all of this. This isn't like building something on the land. The other big problem that we have, I want to build this, as I said, narrower than the drawings you originally had just for a safety for us along that riprap wall. Now then, whenever we do that, we've looked at two or three systems. We originally were going to have an all concrete base filled with foam, and it's sort of typical. But our costs have come back to 100, 115 grand just for the float amount of the bill. We might, you know, if you figure it at $100 a square foot, would only be, you know, 25,000 or 40,000, somewhere in there. And the whole goal on this is to get the prices as low as possible so that we can charge as low as possible for our tenants. What else can I tell you?
So is thinking of possibly going to...
Oh, we're going, yes, we've almost decided. We'll go to aluminum float.
Structural.
Construction with billets of foam and/or what they call, I forget the name for it, pressurized logs inside the billets that...
Is it deep enough there down low tide?
Yes.
You don't want to drag it in.
One, yeah. That's, but it's where it goes down on the slope, you have it here. I don't know, that drawing.
Where the riprap, yeah. See this, see the high tide?
This is low tide. Now then, if this goes down to low tide, I'm going to pull closer.
Yeah, so that's what I wanted to hear.
And some of those were put in sort of loose. And if you look at the last picture in there, you can see what I'm talking about. I think, yeah.
Yeah.
And so that's why we're trying hard to narrow it down, but it's hard to get it within in that 14-foot, 12-foot space. And we do have a loft on the top that will relieve it and they can use a lot for storage when these guys come. Surprisingly, they come with lots of suitcases for some reason. And, um, that'll give them spaces for that, space to have a little office in there or whatever they want.
Those guys are meant to be in that room?
No.
No, it's, it's code.
And then there's a shared deck on the top so that they don't necessarily spill out onto the docks and...
Yeah.
These type of people tend to have a few drinks and party a little bit. And so, um, you know, by putting the shared deck on top, whether they share it or not, but at least it's there and not on the docks.
And it's sort of controlled, so no one's up there except just those two people that live in that same unit.
What is the area of the, the internal area of the reduced?
Well, the internal area...
Of the reduced. So it's originally 227?
I know it's 12 by 14, I don't have a calculator. 12 by 14 plus, excuse me, with the bathroom, it would be 16 by 14. Someone's got a calculator.
That's the outside dimension, right?
No, the inside dimension, Dad.
Inside dimension.
So the inside's 14, 13 feet?
Yeah, the inside dimension is, is 12 foot by, by, well, I used outside dimensions, I'm sorry.
So let's say, so let's say it's 13 times what's the width, the length?
13 by 15.
Yeah.
And then the bathroom is 4 foot.
So 20, is that 27 right there?
No, 17.
17, so say 60.
Yeah, that's an error of what you're seeing.
It's approximately 208.
Plus the loft. So 143...
Plus the loft, but yeah.
143 square feet plus the bathroom.
And the bathroom is, is actually fairly generous in that it holds, it actually has a closet, if you look at it currently, and, um, some storage, like clothes, underwear, sort of type.
And that's only on the new one that's showing that. But you will see in the bathroom, it's got a hot water heater in there. That, that's, that's fluid in the sense that it will move up and down to balance the building out. You understand what I mean? Because it's very heavy, it'll raise 60, 80 gallons of water. So that's, we're going to use that as our ballast, or help balance things out. And we'll make the best guess we can before we do this and try to balance that on one side or the other. The...
And that's shared between the two units? The hot water.
The hot water is.
But there's two separate hot water.
We're not metering, you know, like we would if you were renting all of them, so, so we're just covering all of electrical.
And yeah, I saw solar panels, are you trying to do...
Well, let me explain the solar panel. If you look at the drawings, it says wastewater treatment, right? We are processing all of the wastewater directly on-site.
In each unit, or in each building?
It's an approved unit for lakes and as well as saltwater to direct deposit. We will, because we have the facilities in our existing buildings, we'll put in our emergency or cleanout situations where we can pump it out if it...
If there's a failure or it's for some reason that the, it isn't treating it correctly or something like that.
So we have that covered with that system. It's a built-in system and we have to design it so we can get quoted and inspected and work on it as necessary.
Is that subject to inspection by coastal health or something like that?
Yes, yeah, they've all approved it. These are all prefab units that they approve, either for four or eight units. We're putting in the four-man unit material. Even though that we only have two, we think it'll be more than adequate to serve that.
So these are directly discharged into the bay?
Yes.
And are they monitored by coastal health or once they're installed, it's a done deal and that's...
Pretty much they've got all the certificates and things on it. We'll monitor it, we'll watch that, we're concerned about ourselves.
Electricity presumably to operate? They require electricity to operate?
That, she asked a question about the solar panel. The solar panel provides an ongoing electricity if something goes out. And it goes down and it's got a pump that pumps oxygen or, or air in through it to make this system work. And if you need more information on it, I can get you, it's a Go Green system if you'd like to read up on it.
So if you Google Go Green?
Yeah.
Go Green wastewater, probably is the type of...
And we have elected to put in what they call a ship stairs as opposed to a straight ladder to the wall. It's, it's steeper than a normal stair or a coast stair, but it's, it will suffice.
It's less than a straight-up ladder.
Are you, is this subject to any kind of building codes? So you're not, you're not required to meet any building codes?
Well, um, we don't know about that. I can put an outboard on the back of it and not subject to building codes. But we'll have the inspector around, or he'll be around. Our goal is to build the first unit first, get it done, get it costed out, balanced. We'll have tanks that will control the balance level on all four corners to help us maintain that. We are pushing the boundaries of the width at 14 foot. But where that is, it's extremely protected both from the wind and from the sea. And so we think that we can get by with the 14. It's a boat.
It sounds as if you're a bit concerned about stability.
Pardon?
I said, it sounds as if you're a bit concerned about the stability of these.
Well, I, yes, that's, anything that floats, you want to make sure that that's correct. We had an original plan that we submitted that was two stories high. And our engineers can't do that. So that's why we have reduced it. Where original plans, we showed four, four units per float.
So the loft is just six feet high at the highest point?
Six foot high.
It's really just a cozy little spot.
Yeah, so basically it's storage in that low part and, you know...
Put a desk and sit at it maybe type thing, it is cozy.
And the area of the floor ceiling, like underneath the loft and in the bathroom appears to be...
Six foot ten, minimum height, minimum code height. So we're, we're trying to stay within it is. And you can go down to our building that we built here a couple of years ago down...
The Marina offices.
Boathouse. And we have not full-high ceilings, but we have balconies that project out. And they're all six foot ten, if you want to see what those heights are officially. Rodney, you want these primarily for your workers? Primarily for the workers is what we need. And, you know, our workers though, sometimes, as I said, are not always there in the winter. And I think that we can rent these out just like our other loft that we currently have. And it's much bigger than this. It's really a two-story building next to docks or the backside docks. And it rents out for a dollar, I mean 125.
How much would you expect to rent these out if you're talking about to contractors?
Hey, you know, we don't want it dollars yet.
Not to non-employees. No, he's saying non-employees. So two employees were, were just from our numbers, we're thinking, thinking approximately 800. Just depends on the dollars.
Overnight is what you're talking about.
Probably 100 to 125.
Nice.
Yes.
So you make far more money renting them out to people like that than to provide for your employees?
Of course.
Yeah, probably so.
Now, you need the employees or...
You got to run a business too.
We got to run a business too. And, and I would say that both of our businesses offer a lot to this community. And, um, we had 68 employees approximately between the two companies this summer. And we run with approximately 45 to 50 depending on, but docks, since I took it over, has, is a profitable company again. And it's running and they, and running well. And so we have seen growth this summer of about 20%. So we don't know where that's going to go the next year. You can't really protect, we don't project. We don't know necessarily how much the fires impacted this summer or what. But even we see more locals all the time coming in and, you know, we supply, I think, a need for a restaurant that's open seven days a week. We also do a lot of charity work for the community and the space is used for different events within the community too. And it all takes employees to run those from gardeners to, and Smith, who cleans, cleans it. So it's everybody in the book, so.
Will your, does staff be renting these from you?
Yes. Oh, yes.
And what is, what rent are they paying?
We predict 800 a month.
800 a month?
Yes.
But we don't want to rent it out monthly to anyone but staff. See, if staff doesn't pay, we can get rid of them instantly because we're not under the Landlord Tenure Act as a...
As a renter.
Or as what he calls landlord, I guess, because they're staff housing. That's why I say if we rent it out, you know, non-staff to someone in the winter, it'll be on a daily basis, like a motel.
So in other restaurants, if they have, everybody has staff issues?
Yeah.
Everybody has staff issues.
So you think they're well-being?
So you think there will be extra in the summer or you think we'll fill all the units?
There could be staff, I, I don't know, in the summer I suspect we will fill it up.
Yeah.
We didn't have enough staff at this summer.
I can almost tell by now.
We can, yeah, we can almost tell by now probably.
Rhonda, sorry.
I was just saying you're talking about possibly in the winters, at least contractors, uh, coming in there. Um, what about extra parking for their big trucks or their long trucks?
Well, we don't allow long trucks.
We try not to, yeah.
Yeah, unless they arrange the parking in our work area is the only place that those go. On vacation, they'll do that.
And in the winter week, our parking is not an issue like it is in the summer at all. If you go to our parking lot in the winter, there are plenty of empty spaces.
And what about the water? Not, not so long to provide for another twelve, ten or twelve homes?
I think so. That's one of the reasons that we switched to the treatment center because the free, the sewage is more critical than the water. And going into our, we have less than twenty-five percent that even have a car, let alone drive to work, and that's now.
Rhonda, you, just remind me what your zoning is now for living boards in the marina and what level are you now?
We're, our zoning is fifteen boats that we can have as living board.
Okay.
I don't, I'd have to check, it varies, you know, because they come and go. In the winter, it's higher because we, uh, put in winter mortgage in addition to our regular one. We get rid of, our, our marina is, let me explain to you, is broken down to seventy-five, twenty-five. Seventy-five is what we call permanent, they pay once a year and they're there. Twenty-five percent of the area, the slips, we save for transient. We'd like, sometimes we like more. And those people that are living there, or, excuse me, renting from us, if they're out on vacation, we give them a twenty buck shot if we can use their slip. Now, we might make fifty, uh, you know, depending on the size of the boat. But at least we get a few extra slips, we're double using that for transient.
According to the...
The transient goes dead in the summer.
In the winter.
And then we rent out that twenty-five percent just for winter.
A lot of people, you know, their boats, they're, Alan Dahlde on the other side of the island, he's one of our longest tenants. He comes, his boat is on the other side of the island all year long. In the summer, he comes and brings Vanessa the boat, and she sits all winter long. Because it's safe, it's protected, um...
Primarily the, the few people that are traveling through, you know, between the states and Alaska or out, really serious cruising. But the biggest user are people on the island that have morning boys or docks where they don't want to leave their boat tied up in the winter. So we provide a safe shelter for them.
So how about float houses on that's more that I was getting to?
We have three, and that's counting, we only have two.
Yeah, then the office counts as...
The off, office you have elected to count as a float house. You meaning the municipal.
And one, so Vanessa, um, and Dennis own one of the float houses. And the other float house is one that we rent out overnight. So most of the time in the, it's not, it's not full-time use like Vanessa and Dennis is.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And we will, we look to, if this is really working out, to get rid of that existing float house and sell it. It's pretty old.
It's quite old, and replace it with a newer, similar to these ones.
Yeah, put another duplex in there.
Yeah.
No, we'd probably keep it a, a single unit one because we get a lot of families that want to come with it, phone and stuff like that. And we just want to replace the, uh, we will be replacing eventually the float house that came, the original one that came with the marina. It's just really old and it's a structural...
It's all long base.
Yes.
Still end up by the corner.
Correct.
Uh, what would you do to accommodate all of these, these little boats you're going to displace, where will you put them?
Well, you know...
Well, first of all, they're dinghies, they're not boats, um, and...
Most of them are dinghies, yeah.
And they are all, they are peoples who are in our, we don't allow people on the dinghy dock who are not in our marina. So it is sort of a, a perk to be able to have a dinghy dock like that. They'll have to keep it on their boat, which most of them do in the summer.
Most marines don't have a place like that. What we will do is we get, you know, and this will be a gradual expansion. Uh, as we move into the area, you know where Earl's Shed is. We'll probably remove Earl's Shed, keep the float because it provides a good breakwater for those houseboats, and put a rack on it so that all the smaller boats can be put up on it. And the bigger ones, you know, that we can put between those docks. We'll lose some, but we need to lose some.
Yeah. All right.
Any progress, questions? Any questions, sir, or director?
About how long to build it, do you have any idea now or...
Well, um, we're, we've started, you know, the design, it's a month or so, and we'll start building.
I think three to four months if that to build the first one. And what we really are looking for is to get approval to at least build this one so we can, because it is a little different than building a house in there.
I don't know, still want, we want all of them.
We do want all of them. I know, retract that.
Four thousand dollars for building these guys.
Yeah.
No, yeah, no, you want approval for as many as, as your...
We do, but we're going to go ahead and build one as fast as we can.
Have we?
On an island or some...
We're, as I said, the dibs that came back for the concrete ones at over a hundred grand each.
For the base.
And so we think that we can build on site with, because we have aluminum welding capabilities that we're, I don't know if you've been down to our docks and seen the new floats?
Yeah, no, I haven't down.
I'm down, we'll show them, they're extremely working out very well. So we can build that on site. You know, two weeks aluminum, another week of turning it up. The craning and handling is going to be the largest thing, we really haven't solved yet. If we have to, we can build it over at Thunderbird Marina and then float it over. We're, we'd like to keep it here because it's more economical. The, what else can I tell you on the, oh, what we are building on this is we're all, all of the buildings will be a SIP system. That's a structural insulated panel. And those panels are four foot wide by whatever height you design them to typically ten, twelve foot. And the building, once we get the, the floor done, the building will all be prefabbed and these panels...